You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
Joe, how you been? Good?
Good, busy for good.
Good. Did you eat those ribs later on in the evening or the next day?
Tonight.
Get another dog?
Tonight.
You actually, you don't waste shit, do you?
I don't.
Don't you?
Yeah.
You don't waste shit like that on video. Oh, man. Laurie. Don't play me over there, you. Oh, my Laurie did. Oh, my God. Everything looks so different.
Um, the agenda that you sent out, it just had two, I don't think it was consent, but, um, ten plus the Russell, the Gable's one, and the So, go with the other side. Yeah, because the agenda is
And add these two to it.
Should also be on there. I guess we don't have
Yeah, they have it.
And, um,
Oh, yeah, we staff.
Um, and personnel actually, there's two non-public session minutes.
What are the day terms?
But there's more on consent agenda. So, I didn't realize that, um, Jay won't send to the buyer.
Okay, so does April nine?
April two. April ninth, good.
Donovan, how you doing?
Folks, how are you doing?
Good, thanks. We're just getting a little bit organized.
Yeah.
So, Laurie, there will be one or two added in this area, personal action reports. That's just what was in the template. There will be Should be whatever it is in there. Just the two that you put on. And what?
Yeah, okay.
So, this, this is the packet that I
Yeah, so I can add twenty there.
And I'm actually going to have him add in there, I can't to cut this off, because that came in today. So, there may be some that aren't on there.
Yeah.
But from y'all, so we make sure we just go off the packet.
Make all of them approved.
Because the agenda is really just
April ninth, one.
Subject to change at the board's discretion.
April nine, April ninth, okay.
For at the line.
Seven.
Can we approve the discussion?
Three here.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, we just approved the non-public meeting minutes for April ninth, one and two.
Okay.
Your turn, Mr. Senator.
I'm the hot seat.
Welcome.
Thank you guys for having me.
Appreciate you coming in.
Mark, well, the selectman's position, yeah, why the hell you here?
I do not know, are you?
I don't think so. I'm done, sir. Please don't need you. Congratulations.
Sue.
Sue, how are you?
Joe Russo, you know Joe?
Yes, I know Joe. How are you, sir? Um, really, it's what you guys want to talk about. Uh, you listen, kind of tell you what's going on in the legislature right now. Um, you know, most of the bills are through the legislature. Our Senate bills have gone to the House, the House bills have gone to the Senate. It's something we call crossover, it's where we vote on our bills. Uh, big ticket item right now is the budget. We're in the thick of the budget right now. Uh, not sure what it's going to look like. Slightly higher revenues than the House connected. You know, we have the Senate, which is a good thing, so it's about two hundred eight million, kind of more to work with. So, that has been taking up a lot of our time. Bill, I know you've mentioned a lot of the zoning issues. Um, we have had, we've seen so many zoning bills this year. Um, and, you know, myself and a couple of colleagues, we tried to slow off a lot of these bills, but, um, you know, it's both parties really pushing through some of these bills. I made a list of some of the ones that probably affect you folks. And I'm sure, Bill, you got a list too, on you. Um, two ninety-six issuing building permits on private roads. Uh, that's up for a vote tomorrow. I was against that bill. Um, six thirty-three, housing investment.
How do you think that's going to?
I think it's going to pass.
Do you do think it'll pass?
So, the problem is, you know, so NHMA has done a really good job in the past stopping a lot of these bills, but the majorities in the Senate and the House believe that local zoning is the single issue stopping housing being built right now. Which, you agree with them or not, whatever, but that's the way these bills are being proposed. And kind of put in front of everyone. You know, five seventy-seven is the ADU bill, accessory dwelling unit bill, that just passed. I worked closely with NHMA to try and get an amendment to restore local control to a lot of that. So, the whole thing is, you know, you guys already have the power to do all these, all these things, but now these bills are going to strip away your control to, you know, say whether or not it's a good fit for your community.
So, is it going to be by right, that they come to the zoning board at all, or they just go right through?
You know what, uh, it's a multitude of things. It's going to be that, you know, you guys have to issue the building permit on a private road. But, you know what, and, and it's, it's crazy, because, you know, in the past, you've had issues on private roads where, you know, you guys are responsible, even though you're not. You know, there's a gray area there in legality. Um, so it's going to be a mix of, they have it by right, some have come to the zoning boards. A lot of it is to, like SB eighty-four is if you have sewer and water infrastructure already. So, smaller towns really don't have that, which is a good thing, so that they don't have to apply to these things. But it's going to be, it's, they're really unfunded mandates.
Is eighty-four the one that requires a town that does have sewer to show that they don't have capacity in their sewer to accept the additional bill? So, that's an additional burden? Like, for example, now, that's why Joe is here, to talk about our situation in West Swansea where we've got studies on going out, and he can, he can address that.
Yeah, I think, I think, Joe, you brought up last time, was for the wastewater operators.
We, wastewater operators, right now, we're fortunate enough to get a planning study grant from DES, and engineers are currently working on it. But, so over here in West Swansea, there's a lagoon system, a wastewater plant. The North Swansea collection system discharges in Keene, so that's in pretty good shape. But over here in West Swansea, we're in a position, we're trying to get the operators situated, which I think we're getting a lot better shape now, we're working on some waivers with DES. Uh, but the plant, in its current state, we cannot take on any other flows. And as you see, there's orange for operators for sale on Route ten, and they just, they If they were to look up to the plant right now, they have to have, it's called pre-de, pre-treat before they can connect into the collection system. Uh, so a plant study is taking place. One of the things they're looking at is maybe shut the lagoon down and simply sending, uh, force me now, who can connect to Keene Collection. We own a portion of the flows that go into Keene, we own enough that could take West Swansea as well. Uh, so it's one of the things they're looking at. The other thing they're looking at is a complete upgrade of the plant, which could absorb ten, twelve million dollars in, you know, cost.
Problem is with funding for the plant.
Exactly, the same thing, same thing with the found, there is a capital approval, but nothing for that, nothing for that. Um, so we're going to see if the engineers come back, with the planning study, but we're in pretty rough shape as far as future growth and and then the big deal is meeting the EPA permit. So, there's a permit that lasts about five years. I think we're approximately halfway through. We barely met the requirements of that permit. And EPA is making the, the requirements more difficult to attain, different items they're testing for. It's likely, regardless of the amount of flows we take, it's likely that we won't be able to meet the needs of the next permit.
You know, and you guys aren't alone in that situation. It's a lot of small towns in Athens, where, you know, District ten is interesting, because we have Keene, but then it's surrounded by small towns like Swansea, Chesapeake, or Old Surry, things like that. And, um, a lot of these bills are being pushed by, you know, more densely populated groups and areas, essentially. Um, and so, you know, there's a coalition, a, or meet in the middle, which is a good thing, to try and stop a lot of these bills, to try and shore a lot of locals on it. But a lot of these are passed, and, you know, they're unfunded mandates, in my opinion.
There was one, I neglected to bring my glasses, so I can see which one it was, but there was one that actually prohibits local ordinance commending or being more restrictive than what the new ordinance has come down from the state. And that, that's completely counter to what we, we had previously.
Well, you guys know, we're, we're the best, the state doesn't. You know, that's what it comes down to. Um, and I urge you to reach out, you know, slide in the House, anyone who possibly can to raise a quick flag about these bills. But the bad, the bad thing is, you know, a lot of these bills are already passed.
And they've already gone on to, to the governor, or?
She has a couple of bills in front of her, but she has not signed yet, so it would be good to lobby her, uh, just kind of express her situation too. Um, but she, I, I don't believe she's signed them all.
Uh, with regard to the rooms and meals, maintaining it at thirty-whatever point percent, how did you come down on that bill?
Um, we're trying to maintain it, we can't grow it, that's the problem. You know, just because revenues aren't there yet. You know, we're, we're pushing, we're, we're pushing all everything down to you guys. You know, we're making user power to make up, but the state can't make up right now. And it's not a way to do business, in my opinion.
So, if I remember correctly, one of the options was to cap it at a hundred thirty-seven million? Uh, the, the option, obviously, what we prefer is that it stay at fixed thirty-whatever it is percent. If you had an opportunity, you participate in that?
We, I have not yet, no. That's, that's still in finance.
So, would, would you be in favor of keeping it at the thirty percent?
Yeah, I don't, it makes no sense to cap it. You know, I think, um, you guys, you know what's best for your communities and all sorts of revenues, you know, it's what's best for you guys.
So, how, how are you feeling in your third year?
You know, it's actually my tenth year in the legislature, believe it or not, I've been there. It's for three terms.
Is it seven?
No, it's for three terms in the house, this is my second term in the Senate. You know, I, I've seen a lot of budgets. Um, I'm very nervous about this budget, I really am. And take all the politics out of it, I'm just worried about a lot of essential services and unfunded mandates that we're going to be dealing with for quite some time.
We, we have a situation now with, with regard to, potentially, regard to Medicaid. Uh, it is a mental health issue that we've constructed with, with one of the benefi, beneficiaries of the fact that they lived in Swansea at one time. And Jennifer tried a bill earlier this year to, to put through that would have amended or reduced the requirement of a municipality from having to carry the load for, for people almost in perpetuity. This particular individual, we're basically housing in the central part of the state in, in different forms. It, it's catastrophic.
Yeah.
And Laurie can speak to it more specifically than we can, but the, the fact that there's no, no way for the municipality to step away. And, and the services that are needed, that would really help this individual, are not, either not available or they're, they're not being taken advantage of, and the burden falls back on the town.
You know, that is a tough one, because someone has to make up funds somewhere. You know, who's going to be paying for it ultimately? Um, I didn't see Jennifer Rhodes, who they referred to. I didn't see her bill, so I, I don't, I can't comment on that.
I don't think you even came on the committee.
Well, we can talk about that, I think, you know. If you have an issue with a constituent, I'm happy to, my office is happy to help out, dealing with the state or any agencies we can help with.
Can you connect with, with our father?
I'm an easy guy to find.
Right around the corner?
That's right.
You drive by at every day, twice, whether you want to or not.
Hopefully, you want to, love.
What? She comes for the after.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's just amazing to, to see the erosion of local control. Uh, and it's, it's really puzzling, because the, the public law advocates for housing taking the one-size-fits-all is, is just not a solution. It's created tremendous
No, I mean, you know, Bill, you and I can talk offline about the dynamics behind this. But, uh, no, I agree, it's, it's, you know, there's a way, and They got rid of the House champions, for the House got rid of the House champions program as well, which, you know, Keene qualified for, a lot of small towns qualified for. And so, we have all these unfunded mandates coming to you guys, stripping local zoning, and I just don't know who's going to pick up the tab saw.
The taxpayers.
Put that in the notes.
Call your local senator.
You know what, I'm on there, you know, and you can reach out to, you know, NHMA. Um, you know, I've tried to meet in, meet in the middle on a lot of these bills, where we retain local control, but we give a little here, a bit more housing, you know, but I can't even get, I can't even get that passed, even amendments passed, you know? Um, it's just, it's like they're way of the highway right now.
And it's basically both parties?
Basically, both parties, um, yeah. But there's also members of both parties that don't want us to happen, you know? It's, you know, I sit in Commerce, I sit on four committees this year, on Commerce, Ways and Means, Transportation, and Capitol Budget. Um, and we don't allow these housing bills in Commerce. And, you know, testimony in favor and testimony in opposition is just like, you can't, you're trying to even know something.
Sad. It's just sad to see local control being taken away, especially on the issues that are most personal to, to a town.
Really, all reasons they gave, you know, this, the town's control was because they know their communities best.
I'm not one of those, just kind of sorry about that.
That's fine.
Joe, do you have anything else that, that, uh, Donovan could potentially be helpful?
No, I think that's a big thing, as far as funding for waste, with these small communities, the wastewater and, and water for that, you know, our, our big need is a, is the wastewater plant. Okay, the one thing I think, when talking about building houses on private drives, which is very problematic, it's how it's What about Class Six roads? Because we've seen a big push, people trying to build a Class Six roads in our We don't maintain a Class Six road, there's no budget for them, and they're not feasible to build on, because just let a wildfire emergency response, uh, winter maintenance, there's and so far, we, we don't allow that, we don't allow driveway permits on Class Six roads, but there has been a big push there.
That's what's coming up for road tomorrow. Um, and you expressed everything that I've expressed, you know? And there's a gray area, just like you said, a fire truck can't get down there. Does the, is that person going to sue the city because, you know, their house burned down? You know, are they signing away rights and saying, I'm not going to sue the city? So, it's just, there's so much ambiguity in these bills. Um, but they're just, they're so fast and furious, it's crazy.
And that was covered, a lot of our Class Six roads have been destroyed, although it's serious flooding over the last couple of years, and they're not allowed to maintain them, there's no taxpayer funds to maintain them, they're just, there's no way to, to build on, but people are trying.
Yeah, and then, we had, last time we talked about terrain permits, is that still an issue here?
Oh, the alteration to terrain.
Yeah.
Uh, the timing is, it's improving.
Okay.
Definitely, it's, that was something that we held out on, is, uh,
Right, yeah.
There's no question that that continues to be a problem. One of the, one of the situations that, that happened to us, when we had the flood in twenty-two, what, was it twenty-two or twenty-three? Uh, there had been an applicant just prior to that, maybe six months or so, who wanted to build at, at the Class Six end of Talbot Hill Road, which comes out onto East Shore Road. They wanted to actually build, I don't know, five or six hundred feet in on the Class Six portion. And the zoning board's trying to down, that was completely washed out.
Absolutely. You, you act, it's totally Ten foot ravine spots, ten feet deep, and they, they were proposing maintaining it in Southwood, in the track. Um, so if that were passed, there would be a house up there that you cannot get to.
Well, it's, it's going to pass, by the way.
Okay, so, but
I'm, I'm a no vote, so I was a no in committee, I'm with you guys on that, trust me.
Yeah. Is there any, is there any part of that bill that, that requires the individual building on the Class Six road to bring it up?
There's, there was an amendment to try and fix some of the, um, uh, gray area of, if, you know, talking about EMS services, things like that, and responsibilities. If the person, the person forfeits their rights and responsibilities to all of that, but I still think there's gray areas where someone can get away with suing the municipality or something.
And we've, we've got portions of Class Six roads, you can base them lock-in, that's the extent of it. Most of them are, most of them, you
Couldn't drive a car.
Right. Do you think that they could potentially be hung up by a lender or an insurance company?
Oh, sure, I'm sure, you know, it's, um, you know, some of these bills we've passed dealing with manufactured housing as well, where they can just take a trailer and park it wherever they want. You know, the ADUs, I, I think, leave, uh, an opening for someone to take a trailer and park it next to their house and say, well, this is an accessory dwelling unit, I'm allowed to do it by, by money. You know, and it's just, um, it's just crazy right now.
Is there anything in that language that requires them to be tied into the, to the supply system?
There is, uh, you know, it's only on for places with water and sewer. Um, but that's being said, you know, there's holes about setbacks in it and things like that. And DES had concerns about the bill as well, things I tried to fix, um, but I felt short.
Trying.
Just trying, that's all I can do, right?
Do you think that the bill will allow manufactured housing throughout the, any residential district? Do you think that's going to pass?
Um, I know, so like the, it's, the ADU bill, accessory dwelling unit bill, just passed the Senate, so it's going to the governor's desk.
That part I don't think would concern me so much, because we already were
Yeah, Keene, Keene does ADUs as well, uh, you know, but again, that leaves some holes in there for manufactured housing. The language isn't tight enough to not allow. It's fine, man, a hundred bucks a year.
And you're earning it.
You know, whatever, funny.
Yeah, that might as well be nice.
Yeah. It's like eighty-five after taxes, who knows counting?
Hey, one of your colleagues subsisted for decades.
True, many of them are still there.
Yeah. Uh, anybody else?
I would like to meet in the comments, if I could.
Yeah.
HB four seventy-five. Um, it's about the, um, the default budget and the effect that it has on the SB two towns.
Yeah.
It's already on the consent agenda. So, I would like to request on behalf of the board in the SB two town that you, um,
Take it off consent.
Remove it from the consent agenda and cable it.
Four seventy-five?
Yep, SB four seventy-five.
HB.
I'm sorry, HB four seventy-five. And NHMA, um, does oppose that bill.
I guess it is, it's probably coming out of consent already.
It just doesn't even make sense. It just creates a legal financial nightmare.
Consent bill. Um, off of consent.
So, essentially, we, you, you guys are going to have a consent calendar. Um, if we all agree in committee on a bill, instead of bringing it to the floor, we add it to something called a consent calendar, so that way we can vote on a bunch of bills at once that we've all, that we've all already agreed on.
They can sneak things in that way by just adding it to the consent agenda.
I don't know if it's sneaking, but maybe some people do, you're probably right. Um, but it's a way that, you know, we don't have to bring every single bill to the floor if there's consensus. But every senator or house member can take it off consent, in order to have a floor vote, so.
And how do you feel about the, um, I think it's, it's the Health Trust, what is it?
Two ninety-seven.
Two two ninety.
So, that passed the Senate unanimously, that one did sneak through. That was the Senate president's bill. Um, and I don't know the status of it, it's in the House right now.
Yeah, I think they might have amended it.
So, if it, if it's amended, it comes back to us then, and we have to concur on it or not. And I've gotten a lot of emails, I've
Okay, because that, that was also the fundamental, would, um, be an impact to the taxpayers, for sure.
There's a lot of misinformation out there about that bill too.
Uh, SB seventy-eight, that was the one that would increase the Board of Adjustments Appeal Period from currently, it's, I don't think it's in statute, because there's thirty days as the max, now towns can adopt something different. Would extend it to forty-five days. Do you, do you know what, what prompts that? It creates a, it creates a challenge, uh, because typically zoning boards need on a, on a calendar month. So, if, if the appeal comes in, it can be acted on, the request area, it can be acted on right away. With, with a forty-five day period, it may potentially require a special meeting.
So, I don't know what the bill's status is, my guess is in the House somewhere. Um, it's a Senate bill, but we haven't, it's long gone out of the Senate. Um, that being said, if it was amended, then it might be coming back to us. Do you know, do you know where it is right now?
It just says here that the Senate would have to concur, non-concur, or request a committee of conference.
Okay, so that means the bill was amended in the House, and it's coming back to the Senate. Uh, let me take a peek at it, because I don't, I do not recall the bill. But I think anything with, you know, the whole, you know, the argument here again is that, you know, municipal allies are slow walking on those housing projects, and it's all your fault, and you guys, the sole reason why the housing is being built.
Depends on the community, this, this one is
Does.
As you all.
I'm aware, but that's, that's the argument we've been per, that, you know, it's all your fault.
Uh, SB one eighty-eight?
SB one eighty-eight, can you have a synopsis?
It's recommended, uh, so it's on the House agenda, so I guess we need to get the slide on that one. But that one would allow property owners to use licensed and insured providers for building
Sports, yeah, using third-party home inspectors. And there are, we had, it's to ease construction delays, that's what we're having this
I, I understand that. The, the challenge with that is, any inspector or any fire inspector in the federal, it comes down to interpretation. And so, if the, if it's, community's code enforcement division is not involved in the decision, it's left up to a third party to make a decision that may not coincide with what the community typically
Yeah, where you can adhere to it, yeah, right.
And so, then, then does that, does that make the town, I guess it wouldn't make the town liable, but I just am curious why? Because it, it just, it decentralizes something that you would think would, you'd want to have consistency on.
I'm curious why too. Um, you know, like I said, these bills, I've never seen so many housing bills in the ten years I've been in the legislature. And so many housing bills that deal specifically with local zoning control and stripping it away. And, you know, I have my theories, but, but again, we can talk offline about those theories. But, you know, it really is targeted that, it's becoming kind of a wild west of building, I think a lot of these bills pass.
Absolutely.
And it's, it's not advantageous to the housing market, it's not, it doesn't make sense for local communities. I think there's merit in some of them, and I've tried to meet in the middle on a lot of these bills, but, um, you know, the, the average New Hampshire resident doesn't want local control stripped away.
Then there's, uh, House Bill three forty-two, uh, is recommended, ought to pass, has amended, so I'm not sure what the amendment was, it's on the consent agenda for, for tomorrow. It allows property owners to build on their property without seeking a variance from minimum lot size or lot coverage if the proposed building density conforms to that of the surrounding neighborhood. How would someone know that? And, and why would you take that control for setbacks and lot coverage away from the local community?
I don't know. Yeah, with the term of vigilance, it's, it's all right.
You may not want to
You know, like, uh, thick skin is a difference, right?
No.
Um, good questions, and I don't know, but also I need to see what the amendment is, because that'll, that'll say a lot about the bill.
This one, House Bill 428 prohibits municipal amendments to the state building code. I guess I could understand that, huh?
Is this, what are you reading on, is this from an NHMA?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We were talking about 84. 170. How did you vote, I was curious how you voted on SB 170. This is the one, precautionary, and this would apply to King more so than to Swansea. But, let's see, finally, the bill prohibits municipalities from adopting any ordinance that discriminates based on the familial or non-familial relationships or marital status among the occupants of the dwelling. Would seem to me that that impacts King, because King currently has no more than four unrelated individuals in a dwelling unit. And then it goes on to say, and adds school enrollment status to the list of protected classes under equal housing statute, effectively mandating that group homes, group homes, fraternities, and other congregate living arrangements be allowed in all residential areas. So there are certainly restrictions on group homes in Swansea, and certainly there are in King. I don't think we have anything with regard to fraternities, but but it would, it would change the concept of congregate living arrangements, and would essentially require a community to accept that.
So this bill, I believe is in the House or at the governor's desk by now, because this was an early.
It's on their agenda, consent agenda for tomorrow.
The House, yes, okay, so.
I'm just curious how you thought about it.
You know what, I don't think I was opposed to this bill, you know, I'll be honest with you. I think, you know, King had reached out, a lot of towns had reached out in terms of, you know, being able to provide more housing, and there were stringent controls because, you know, maybe not you folks doing it, but other municipalities resoning that, you know, if you, if you had someone that was unrelated, you couldn't share that room or that apartment. And I thought that was wrong, because it was too strict in some local areas, in some municipalities. I had to double check my vote, it was positive, I did vote for that.
I understand the logic.
Yeah.
Did we have anything else from when you were here before besides the ALT?
No, wastewater, we're trying to get some money in the budget for DES on that. You know, DES is expecting a cut, so I'm not sure where that's been scanned. We're doing okay, trying to keep the agencies at what they were two years ago, but no new funding, it looks like.
Part of the licensing issue, I believe the town has been very patient with DES with some of the issues with the contractor that was running the plan, but the contractors don't want to be running our plan, we're high on our own staff, so we're working on working through some of those issues there. Just recently, communication got better, but if it doesn't continue to improve, we'll be commenting about it. Probably going to the governor's office about it.
Let's go above my head, man.
Include you.
Go above your head.
Volunteer firefighters, there's a grant program State Farm does of the $10,000. Just send you that information, I know you've been asking for some help with that.
I just saw it, actually.
Oh, you did, the State Farm?
It sends it to me and I forward it on here.
Oh, yeah.
Great, good job.
So like, you guys got anything?
I hope that's fine. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and if you guys ever need me, I'm not hard to find, you know, bill has my number. You can call or text me, email me anytime if there's an issue with the bill, or you guys got a question, something similar. If there's something I can help with, you know, Swansea or you folks at all, you know, I'm always available.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Want an old home day with your family?
I will be, I got Memorial Day, March and Marrow this week. Walpole's got an old home day as well, and Swansea's as well, so. And I got an old FJ Cruiser, hopefully it's about Swansea one.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Well, you're welcome to be at our Memorial Day parade on Monday.
What time is that on?
Two o'clock.
It's not a washout, right?
Absolutely, yeah, it's pretty beautiful.
That's kind of excellent. I got three kids under seven, so it's being stuck in a house when it's pouring rain, and we have fun. So I'll happily have them walk through the rain.
Well, thank you, Alan.
Yeah, thank you guys, we really appreciate it, yeah. Always a pleasure. Good luck, sir, again, just saying, yeah, it was a pleasure meeting you, yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Russo, good seeing you.
Good seeing you as well.
Yeah, maybe it sounds like you.
Yeah, recently it's gotten better, the facility's been down for a while.
Okay, next item on our list is a discussion with regard to the custom window blinds proposal for, for come on.
Joe. I can't remember the exact number, twenty-three hundred dollars is it?
Yeah.
Well, obviously, the board discussed concerns about the sunshine, not just for select board meetings, but other, other meetings and elections. So I talked with a local blind professional and recommended, I gave facsimile of what it would be. Maybe basically being installed on the outside trim, where you, no mechanism to the meat, simply there's a hook that pulls them up and down. The supplier would supply them and instruct our staff on how to install them.
Joe, I see the.
Our crew will install them, they'll show them, they'll show them how to install them, and then our crew will do it.
Twenty-three hundred is not included?
No, that's just material.
So I don't, I don't see the amount of windows, how many?
All of them.
So above the bat?
No, not above, just, just the big ones.
Eight, eight large custom.
So let me ask, is it not just gonna, you mean it's gonna be able to go all the way down, the whole windmill?
Yeah.
Not up to the, the.
A lot of them close and they will.
Because those shutters are some close.
They do close, but they're not a fair.
I see, yeah. So they'll go way up top, so you put them all the way down, and then we can go up halfway over them?
Yeah, whatever you want.
You can set them anywhere you want.
Yes, it's like a hook and latch system, with a little bit of a pole that runs them up and down.
So they're big?
Really big, yeah.
Wow, I was just thinking, it's hot, huh?
Because we're closing wood?
I didn't know it was gonna be a lot.
Yeah, we looked at the wood.
Because I thought that was kind of hot, but now that I see that, that's a lot.
Closing the wood really doesn't do too much, and, yeah.
Yeah, we don't want to be telling them to open and close that wood, too, right?
And I compared, like I said, the reason I'm raising the board is just the facility, it's obviously underneath the purchasing amount of the $5,000.
What color are they?
Pretty high profile stuff like this, so I figured we would bring it to the board.
So red screen, so is that what happened?
Chaco color?
It's, it's a black, it's, it's a black, that's got a little bit of a lighter color to it.
That's gonna be.
I think it still filters the light through, right, a little bit?
A little bit, but.
They're nice.
Yeah, really high quality, and looked at some of the prices of other stuff, and it's not close. I mean, it's fairly close in price and not the same quality of this, they're using a lot of municipal buildings. Yeah, libraries, like, I don't know if the example's in the packet, but that one was from the library. The only thing different was that one was inside the window beech, because the louvers are gonna go on the outside of the trim. And when you roll them all the way, if you want to roll them all the way out for whatever reason, the only thing you're gonna see is them up top, and that is it.
So show us some color of them.
Use any color you want, you can start.
Well, I just think gray doesn't match up to tan walsen wood, I would like to see an off-white one, right? I mean, don't you think the gray is the dye?
Can you do that?
You got the darker colored doors in here, the backs of the doors.
So I think the walsen look best.
Oh, it's black.
It also matched the.
I'm not thinking gray in my head.
No, it's dark, very dark.
Oh, okay, that makes sense then.
You wouldn't be able to tell it from black from a distance, a lighter black.
Yeah, since it's charcoal bronze, so I'm picturing something like the color of the back of that wood.
Oh, that would work. I think, I got gray in my head when you said chaco, so.
Looked more black to me when he was here, when he showed them.
Yeah.
So it looked more black to me. You know, he showed some samples, and when you looked at it, it was, it looked black, lighter black.
I missed what you said, when you pull it down, are the shutters closed in the?
Close the shutters and pull it down, yeah.
And then otherwise, the top, the top window could be left covered?
Yeah, you want to only pull it down and leave the shutters, the top window can be covered, yeah.
And we have the money in the expendable trust? We're going through an adjustment period.
I believe, I believe for here, there is, but we can double shop. If you authorize the purchase, and I can work out the finance part of it. So we do that, the only question I have, I think the shipment's gonna be determined, we want more than the twenty-three hundred, then probably. I'm informed.
So you, you kept the twenty-three hundred because it's for all the policy.
No, it's five thousand.
I know, but the shipping.
Pretty common, shipping department do that.
Two hundred.
Twenty, yeah. If they're gonna charge that much a ship, we got problems.
I'll look at it.
Make a motion, that we amount of twenty-five hundred for the purpose of window blinds, we would all expand the trust on.
Change to twenty-five?
Twenty-five hundred. Especially if they're asking for shipping.
I'll set it in that bill.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hopefully, delivery.
I didn't quite hear it.
Delivery deliveries.
I would expect it's under $200 shipping, it's not that heavy. Fifty to seventy-five dollars, I'm guessing.
I think two hundred was.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the proposal from Twin Bridges for security camera system for Town Hall. Do you want to just relay what the, what the scope of the project is?
Yeah, so I'll take a look at that, so I can exactly notice the camera. Now, Alan out there, he, I'm with me, and so the big thing is getting a new 32-channel NVR, which can handle up to 32 cameras.
What's NVR?
It's the control system that controls all the cameras and recordings. And, and then a total of thirteen cameras. So two of them would be inside, I think it's important to have one in the main lobby, the entranceway, a 360-degree kind of fisheye camera with audio for people coming inside. And then all, all points of access to the building will be covered, all the windows will be covered, and the majority of the parking lots will be covered with this system.
And the. Where is it, outside? I'm sorry, this was the second one would be inside, or what do you say?
This second one will be inside, covering the back door. There are, there are gonna be two cameras on the backside that kind of cover the walking up to it, but there'll be one camera pointing right out from inside, the door actually can be forced open, or if somebody's in there, when they're not supposed to be in.
Is that gonna be in that airlock area?
Yes, in that area, and it's kind of a low ceiling in there, but it's the place that it needed to go. There'll be one, one camera on that, as you're, as you're walking on the back door, there'll be one camera on the corner to the left, that'll cover the parking lot, and somebody walking up to the building. There'll be another one kind of halfway in the backside of the building, and then there'll be another camera out covering all the back windows and the roof towards the fire station. And, and then there'll be three out front as well.
Is that covering the entrance of the fire?
It does.
So any vehicle coming down would be.
Would be covered, yes. And then the 32-channel, and the importance of the 32-channel is for the future. Whatever winds up coming to Town Hall after the fire station's moved out, it would give you the option to put additional cameras on it. And that wasn't, that wasn't too big an expense to vote for the bigger unit. The smaller unit, you, basically, if you needed a different one, you could throw in a new one, so Alan recommended going that, with that 32-channel unit.
So where is the main thing, like, can Laurie see what's going on?
Yeah, Laurie would be in the day, Laurie's gonna be the one, and that will be in her office? No, well, it will be in where the computers are and so forth, I don't know how she logs in now, but she would log into a web-based type server to get to the cameras. Similar to what the bridges are.
Okay, so we come in next morning, we see that we're gonna be able to backtrack and go and look at whatever happened? What does that time span?
It's like the bridges, it's a substantial amount of time, it's held for thirty or forty-five days.
Oh, that's more than.
We've used the bridge cameras already. The downside of the bridge cameras, unless you have a date and time when the incident took place, there's an awful lot of footage to look at. You know where to like search it, but the PD recently called me, they had, we call it a road rage incident, but somebody was trying to allege that a car forced them to back into one of the garglets, and the video clearly showed that nobody forced, the guy just backed up, backed into the garglet, and a short time later, a car come driving out. So the PD requested footage on it, so they were able to pull it, and the nice thing about that was they had the exact date and time, so I'm able to go to the computer system, put the date and time, and download the videos. But say you run into an incident, which often happens, that the bridge gotta let nobody know when, you can research a day's worth of footage trying to find out when it was hit.
So you have access right now to tell the bridges?
Yes, myself.
You and.
My cell phone, yes.
Their regular office, right?
It's on a computer, I can log on.
So you can all, so on the bridges, right, like you said, you have to find the time. But at night at the Town Hall, there was no action, these ran on movement, do they turn on? So now, when you look, it shows you.
Yeah.
Like, they ain't gonna run, unless there's movement in the parking lots, if someone's coming in.
Yeah, there's different ways they can set them, but it kind of runs on a revolving, it starts deleting footage, starts deleting footage after a certain amount of time, you know.
So it's gonna be a lot easier to find what's going on with the Town Hall and the bridges.
Yes, whether they, yeah, it's where you use the check service, you log right in, you go to the date and time. It's the same way, it's the same way with, with the bridges are triggered by the vehicles.
Right, because there's a lot of vehicles.
Yeah. There's a lot, there are all kinds of different settings on the system.
Yeah, that's, that's good. How much is this?
Ten thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars.
Installed, all the equipment and installed.
For, we're gonna table this until we get further into the, into the season and determine where the funding will come from. It may end up being 2026. But in terms of moving forward, with it, the, with that, regardless of renovations to Town Hall, will we be covered on the perimeter? Obviously, there'll be some changes inside, but on the exterior, if we move forward with this, we won't have to add anything.
No, and.
The interior.
Yeah, and if for some reason, something popped up where you want to add another camera, then basically, it's, it's basically close to a thousand dollars, a camera from Alex. Alan explained to me, but you'd have the capabilities to add quite a bit more to it. And say, for instance, if you have a public access downstairs, or any access downstairs with office space, you probably want to put another camera inside of that access point.
I think the current regulation has the conference room.
Yeah.
And the assembly room downstairs. All right, and then the next item is, we just gave you a laptop. And what are you paying for this desktop computer?
Well, it's not for me, it's for the sewer department. So as WSO Plus is going away, you first, they're taking their laptop with them. And we, we need a computer, we actually were able to afford a laptop, but Alan asked me about it, and we talked with the operator. Desktop is, is more affordable, by, by close to a thousand dollars, and, and they can get either the desktop. So the operators, mainly Kirk right now, the other operators in the future have to submit monthly BMRs to DHAs, their monthly reports, and data, they have that on the computer, they have their reports and so forth. But there's no reason for them to leave it, to leave with it, so we decided to go with the desktop, which is seventeen hundred dollars. And obviously, with the cost of laptops, are being, being in the high twos, depending on what you get, but there's no way around it, they, they need a computer there.
Would you have DPW?
No, it'd be right at the sewer plant.
Is it accessible by Josh and Nick, or?
Yeah, yeah, they would all have access to that.
So it'd be important to keep it there?
Yes.
Anyway.
Yeah, yeah, it needs to stay there, whoever's, whoever's doing that daily task, that they may need the computer. Kirk is the one that's gonna be filing the monthly reports, but they need emails, we're getting, we got Kirk on the Swansea email now. They were sending a lot of the information DES on WSO Plus's email, but they can't use their personal emails for sending stuff to DES. So Alan's been instrumental in getting that, that set up, and, and you'll see, we have more part-time employees coming on as far as the sewer plant goes, and the DPW department is going to also be involved with that because of his, his. And the DPW informant is going to also be involved with that because of his, his wastewater license, so.
Okay, and where will the funding come from?
For the computer, uh, I'll find out exactly which account in the wastewater, because there's plenty of funding.
Which within your budget?
Yes. There'll likely be a savings from what we were spending on the contractor, I'll find the exact line items coming out of it, but, uh, there'll, there'll, there's gonna be a pretty significant savings, even with the staff we are hiring. We're still gonna be well below the eighteen thousand dollars a month we're paying for contract services.
Alan's gonna get me an inventory list, so we know where, oh, Alan's gonna get me an inventory list, so we know exactly what we have for computers and the, um, timeline on how long they last, so we're gonna have a conversation. We don't typically, like, five years, it should be on there.
I was able to get close to.
Five years, but sometimes stretch it out more, so, yeah.
And I'm surprised mine lasted, because the DPW facility is awful as far as dust and air quality. Um, and that HP laptop I had lasted, just started recently having issues.
I need your secret, I do eighteen months and boom, it's gone.
I think it's Alan, he, uh, he's pretty good, good to me with that stuff, but yeah. I figured with all the dust and dirt that I used to have clean off that thing, I said, there's no way this is going to last. It was just recently that I started acting out. I'll talk to Alan too possibly about a cover, because the wastewater plant's not the best environment either, but it's actually less dust than a DPW facility.
Is there any waste issue?
No, no.
So that sewer plant with the new one we're putting in, where is it set? Is it in a secure place?
Yeah, it's in, it's not so much as an office, but it's kind of a laboratory, when you walk in wastewater plant's all locked, it's, it's kind of an open area where they have a, looks like a science biology lab countertop where they do their testing, there's a desk in the corner, there's a desk in the corner and, uh, that's where the desktop will be set up. Uh, as part of the solar rate project, we just made some improvements to the wire, made bathroom, the hot water system, and we hooked, we really hooked the sink back up. So we made some improvements there as part of that solar rate project.
Do you have any security cameras over there?
Nothing.
That's something we couldn't put, like, one of your.
We could.
cameras in there for now and just.
We could, but more importantly, moving forward in the future, that plant has, if something goes astray over there tonight, there's no warning, there's, there's not. Nothing, they find it in the morning. Whatever, if there was ever an issue. A lot of the infrastructure is dated and, uh, the, the pump stations in North Swansea are on alarm systems. If something happens, they dial the alarm, let you know that something's going on, but everything over here, there's no, the Spring Street pump station, there is no, uh.
There is no alarm?
Nothing. We've worked with Josh, ten and the electrician, at least getting a high water alarm on the holding tank. There's a, there's a big holding tank that the pump shuts down, can last for like three days. Uh, but working with Josh, he can just put no frills, high water level warning. Uh, but that's part of the, the planning study that's being done as far as indicate that there needs to be a lot of upgrades over here in that system.
Well, what I don't understand, Joe, is if we have Wi-Fi, then why can't we put in a little camera over there that's connected to something?
Yeah.
Cheap version, just so we have something.
We could put a camera for people that are, that are coming in and out, yeah.
Yeah, just something, something, right? I mean, Joe has them, and we have them in here, right, something, have something over there. We should do that, since we're putting them. Kids going in there or whatever, it's pretty dangerous.
Good thing it is fenced with barbed wire.
Yeah.
Yeah, but people. Bear, they, there were bear trucks in there recently, Alan, I'll bear that over the fence with that barbed wire, but, but bear trucks in there.
That shows black bear.
Swansea bear.
No, West Swansea bear.
So is that something we're gonna approve tonight on the computer?
Yep, he has the funds, he can talk to me.
Okay. Make a motion that we accept the proposal from Twin Bridges Services, allocate for the purchase installation of a desktop computer for the DPW. In the amount of seventeen hundred bucks, we come out of the DPW budget. Wastewater, wastewater. Second.
Any further discussion?
Can we have someone come in and set it up? And also, now that like this is.
Turn the key, Alan.
Just if you might be plugging in and we're good to go?
Alan sets it up and it's all ready to go.
Okay.
Any else in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
That'll do you for the evening.
Mine, Mark.
Mine.
Are you involved in the EverSource or the vehicle?
EverSource.
All the, uh, the easement were off of Causeway for them accessing the, uh, the power lines. They're just updating that, they're gonna be doing some different posts and such in there. I signed it last time and it just come back up again for renewal.
What is it?
Then the Causeway is like, uh, right away to get back to their, that the Town Hall's, to get back to their power lines, their transmission lines that run behind the airport. And it's an easement allowing them to go in there with equipment if they need to, if they need to put gravel in the road, put stone in the road to get into equipment. You drive down, it's, it's a gated area that kind of goes back out towards the airport.
They can lock gate like?
No, it stays open.
So they just open it, go in?
They just, they can't do any work without your approval.
I got you, so it just, we signed for a year, so and then?
It was longer than that. It was a three.
Terminally, uh, two years.
Two years. There were no issues with them using it last time, it was just kind of a continuing thing.
Shall terminate June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Okay. I moved to authorize the temporary access permit for EverSource in the support of EverSource. T one I D A line structural replacement project and to authorize for the route to the assignment permit.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Are you involved in the twenty seventeen Ford Explorer discussion?
Do you mind me?
The one, the one that, um.
The S and M?
Yeah, so yeah, so, um. There's been some discussion about the maintenance of the, of the vehicles at Town Hall. Uh, Jimmy had asked me about if DPW would oversee the maintenance of them, which.
And this is before we get to that. Oh, is this you?
I witnessed him.
Oh, you witnessed it, thank you.
So. So the two thousand seventeen Ford has an exhaust issue and they, there are three different options. I need to talk with, with, uh, if I'm gonna be the one doing it, I haven't told that. Uh, but I know Jimmy had mentioned to me if DPW would take on, just keeping an eye on the maintenance of the, uh, of the vehicles at DPW. And I said I don't have an issue doing it. Uh, the guys in the shop are pretty handy, most of the stuff, because we don't have a lift for cars, uh, we'd have to go to Emerson, they do all the work anyways. Uh, but the crew is pretty mechanically savvy, so they can kind of look at stuff ahead of time to see what they think. And if there's nothing they can do with it, it goes over to Emerson. So, uh, I mentioned to Jimmy and then just recently mentioned with Lori that I don't have a problem doing that. One thing I know, that since I've been here, the staff cars at Town Hall have been an absolute mess inside, um. I don't know, I've been in them lately, but most of the time you get in, it looks like garbage and dust and dirt. And I don't expect my guys to have to clean up after people, but we would, uh, we would definitely oversee the maintenance if that's what the board decided. But I, I haven't weighed in or talked to Emerson's about, about that particular cars. So I haven't, I haven't been told that.
Who generated the estimate?
Emerson's.
So what, what are the three options? Are you familiar?
I vaguely looked at it, I just said, I said, I, like I said, at this stage, I'm, I haven't been told that I was gonna be in charge of them, so.
I did?
Yeah, basically, the best case scenario, we're not sure what's wrong with it.
So it's been, it's been somewhere?
To Emerson's, yeah, and this is what, I don't know, has it been somewhere? Wasn't it you that gave this?
No, it was, uh, it was Kevin, Kevin, Kevin came to me and asked me if I was gonna authorize this and I told him I haven't been, I haven't been assigned to be responsible for it, so I directed it to Lori.
So.
So what's the issue with it?
It's an, it's an exhaust issue and once they get into it, they'll know exactly what it is, but.
Basically, noise issue or is it infill?
I think it's leaking, by the looks of the gaskets and everything, it's leaking and affecting the way the car's running. They're older cars, a lot of these cars are older and those issues are gonna pop up, the Ford Explorer's E rear wheel bearings, um, and, uh.
Should we, how far should we go before we move on from the vehicle?
I don't know if you really have an option, because.
You can move on from the vehicle.
Oh, they say move on and get another vehicle, that's what I'm about.
We're gonna get another vehicle, we would just be moving on from it.
And that's difficult, because I think you need, I think you need the, the two of them, um, between, between, um, Town Clerk's office and having to, I'm sorry, the tax collector's office and making bank runs and so forth. And code, and code enforcement, um. What, I, like I said, I haven't communicated with Emerson's at this, because I haven't been told that I'm gonna be working on the maintenance of the cars. What I would do is, if I was in this situation, is I would talk with Emerson and say, listen, it's an older car, if it's on the high end of this, we have to reevaluate whether we're gonna put the money into it or just get rid of it. Uh, but I haven't had any discussions about it.
Would you like a motion to give you the opportunity to have that?
It's up to the board and Lori, you, you guys want me to oversee the maintenance, um, I, I can do that, but like I said, I'm pretty out of it. I do not expect my guys, and I've seen the way the cars get taken care of over there in the past, um, I do not. I wouldn't ask my guys to clean up after people that are driving cars over there, so if you, if the board wants to have DPW be responsible for the maintenance, I, I can definitely take that on. If that's what, what Lori and the board wants and we can look into this.
Do you want consensus on that?
It's up to you.
It would be helpful for, for us, because you're more knowledgeable in this area than I am. But if you don't have the time to.
No, we can, we can, we can definitely handle it, uh, but like I said, something, I think some things we could walk to the staff or clean up after themselves or once in a while.
I think the answer.
Have a policy, I'm gonna have to work into that.
I was just gonna say, I think the answer to that is we should have an inspection of these cars, that who drives them, the rec center drives one, the tax collector drives one? Every two months, we should give them a, so to open their cargo, make sure there's no McDonald's box.
They actually have the.
We do an inspection, like, state records, if they do an inspection of all your vehicles.
Every month.
Every month, we check out, make sure.
Maybe we can add to the policy, but it's not in how we, I don't have time to look at it, but, um, but it's left in the condition that they found it, it should be cleaned.
I mean, they finds that up to, like, that's just how I talk about it.
I don't know.
We'll, we'll work through that.
Yeah, and I, so, we'll take that out.
So you got that by consensus?
Okay.
So are you gonna take it to a service facility and?
I had a conversation with the, the new guy who was very reputable at Emerson's, Emerson's, Emerson was great, but I hear the new guy, his name's Chad. Uh, he's already helped us out with one of the sidewalk machines, he's been very reasonable. But the conversation I would talk to him about, listen, can we dig into this, they can see, if it's twenty-seven hundred dollars of exhaust work, it's probably not worth doing to the car. Uh, if it's sixteen hundred, we probably have a difficult decision whether Town can go without another vehicle or not. If it's a hundred and twenty-four dollars, it's an old brain. Uh, and I can ask Claude, who's the most mechanically inclined at DPW to take a look at it, but without a lift, it's probably tough to get in there and really be able to do anything.
Can I add to that? This car is all paid for, I get it, I pay a little bit for it, we don't mind that, you know? But when we're using this vehicle for not driving a lot of miles and Joe can fix these reasonably, we still think it's worth it to have this car. You know, instead of throwing them to the towel, you know, I, I still think this car is, we pay for it, we get new side, we get years to come. And I hear that, oh, we're getting these old cars and we're putting money in, I still think it's worth it. You know, if we get two or three years, look what used passport for Joe, what are we gonna get for used car? You can't even touch them these days. Now, this car is ten thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars.
Is this the Ford Explorer?
Yes.
The car or the SUV?
The S and M.
Okay, the SUV.
The reality is, if it's not worth fixing, it's not being replaced.
No, yeah, that's the problem, so that's why I think you gotta see what you can do to, to make it, make it work. And one good thing is, most of the trial of the town cars that I'm aware of is all local. So it's not like you're sending somebody to Rhode Island and making a strange turn of the road. Tomorrow, actually, DPW is taking one of them to Sunpy because there's a training slash demo that's going on by the municipal association, um, that a few of the guys are going up to, uh, instead of bringing two heavy duty trucks driving all the way up there, go grab a load, so.
Take this one?
Yeah, they'll, yeah.
Well, the challenge is just gonna figure where the money's coming from.
Yeah, that was the other thing, I mentioned to Lori, what, what budget is there for the repairs? I, I have no idea, I've never.
I want to go into that.
These, these were something that became available because the, the vehicles were going offline, we weren't getting anything, this was pre-COVID, we weren't getting anything in the market, so it became an opportunity, but we're not in a position to replace it, it's not missing out.
No, and that's just one thing to consider, too, as far as staff using personal vehicles, if they're on the clock and they're driving their own vehicle doing something reliable, you own their vehicle.
Sure.
Something happens, the town employee, not just the town.
Can't come back.
You know, somebody in the private, the private sector in a big business, somebody ran an error in their own car and got in a bad accident and it cost the, the company a lot of money. So it's just one of, one of the things to cover, so, yeah.
That's why I think these things and all this are worth it, I know we've heard a lot about that, we're foolish with this whole car, but we don't have the money to have a new one. He's coming in, he can be, it's more viable to have somebody in their own vehicle. They even could have their transmission blown, put it on us, and they're on vehicle, right? So, I don't know, I just hope we really look at this, you know, and I think Joseph, I look at it, because I do it. You know, a lot of these vehicles too, isn't it a lot of idle time too?
Yeah.
Because they run a lot, because when you guys sit, when you sit at Nick's restaurant, right? I'll let you leave your car running, right?
Not me anymore, no I don't. But, uh, yeah, I mean, I don't know what the mileage is on this, this particular one, but the mileage on the Sedan, the mileage on that Sedan's fairly low, like seven thousand.
Yeah.
It's not very good, it's killed the market, so we gotta get rid of it.
And they've been a lot of change, so the number.
Yeah, Emerson's are pretty careful, right? I'm not aware of them, I'm not aware of any large, large, large bills on them so far, this is something.
Exhaust leak, that, that, right?
So I'll start looking into it.
And then let me know when I'll figure out if we have the money to reset.
Okay. So that'll be something, Joe, I'm trying over the next week or so.
Talk tomorrow, tomorrow, tomorrow's a rainy day, so I'm gonna go, the guys will grab it, um, take it for advice, see what's going on, and then I'll have a conversation with Chad. Please name the chat.
Yes.
Okay, on that. Thank you, Joe, thanks for giving us part of the reading.
You're welcome. Hopefully that building passed my house, it's on classic roads.
That horse left the barn, you know.
The one problem, but that, even if that does pass, most of our classic roads are so bad that you can't even drive a car down them, let alone build a house.
Right.
And then there's law that you can't use taxpayer funds on maintaining them, so. We're just gonna see that building, and I get the, I get the notifications, I, maybe I missed it, but I don't remember seeing, usually, the, uh, public works group, they started emailing about stuff like that and nothing came across my desk on that. That's more trouble, troubling than the private guy.
But the majority of my classic roads are done?
Yeah, bad, really bad.
Really bad.
Can't drive a car.
No.
Yeah, because they, because they don't give any paint?
All right.
Have a good night, you guys.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks.
Is the, is the updated SOP in our packet?
It is.
Oh my god. Can you believe it?
The, um, agenda packet should, yes, and I can.
You want to know the highlights of this?
Um, I sort of just created my own, because I could look at the first paragraph, but I had a hard time seeing what you guys thought of the policy and I just think this is more just like basic and.
Great, and it did downsize it.
If we have to implement something, I just kind of, um, I mean, it's pretty basic, too, the purpose is to establish clear guidelines for staff regarding scheduling of meetings with external visitors and permitting yes access to secure areas within the Town Hall. And it aims to protect the safety and security of town employees' property and information while maintaining transparency and accessibility to the public.
Is there also language in here regarding productivity and opportunity to perform functions without unscheduled interruptions? As part of the purpose?
I started setting meetings up.
I think the, what, what we, you, you said very well the last time you and I talked about it, which was part of the security, but you just had a conversation with someone this morning and the way you related that to me was, I thought was perfect. But it included language about productivity.
Yeah, I mean, like I explained this morning, you know, just I think having, if you're not familiar with that person, I should go to the conference room, and that way it's central to the-
There was that, but when I talked to you about that discussion you had and the person was concerned about access and you gave them an answer. Your answer in part was the purpose that you got here, but the other part of it had to do with productivity and an uninterrupted workspace.
Exactly, yeah, just to keep the employee, you know, because I feel like what we, what you guys have done now, it just started shutting that door to the public, has definitely related to access and the coming and going into the opposite. I had feedback from, from the staff saying it's definitely helped and they're able to concentrate more without being interrupted by, you know, people coming in and out. So it has, yeah, definitely a more efficient working environment.
So you're saying maybe add that to the purpose a little, like put a little courage in there of saying that it's for that too?
Okay.
I mean, that's what you did.
I didn't do that.
Yeah, and that would go right in there, number one, right? I think you did a wonderful job other than that. I think it's easy, it's simple, and it's, you know, what, help me with the, so any staff in behind those doors can open those doors to somebody?
Currently.
Currently, yeah.
So Edna, Lisa's sitting in the little old coat office and she sees someone at the door going, you know, waving at the door.
She wouldn't see them.
If she gets up from her desk and looks out the door or something.
She wouldn't see them.
But we did also-
She saw the doors.
Oh, the new doors are gonna be glassed off.
And they'll be locked to the public, they won't be able to come, like you, if you come in the front door, someone will just see you and buzz you in.
They have to be buzzed by either side of the clerk and the techs.
Yeah, but now, just having those office personnel on the signs has limited the two and four of those.
I noticed. There is still some people that bother too, but I noticed one do it the other day and I was surprised. But it looked like it was the type of person too that just used to have the old ways.
Right.
Hey, wait.
It is understanding, well, it's hard for-
Yeah, we haven't trained anybody, we haven't, we haven't forced it.
Change is hard.
It's like going over the covered bridge, and then they did nothing, but now it's not motivation.
Okay, so can you plan about embellish on the scope? Just take us through each category.
So this policy applies to all employees, contractors, interns, and temporary staff working at the town hall. Any questions there? If you can add anything to that? I left it kind of vague.
Well, it says it applies to everybody.
Well, it applies to members of the public.
Should I add something?
I think so, because it's really, it's part of what we're- I'm not sure that I would quit working at town hall because to me that implies that everything that came before that had to do with town hall. I think it applies, it applies to basically anyone having business at town hall. Well, I don't know, just some of you guys might be familiar with that.
No, because you think that people are constantly like-
Conducting business.
She's Kentucky.
Kentucky, huh?
No.
Conducting town- Or conducting business at town hall, not administ of the public. The next one, three general guidelines for visitor access, scheduled visits. All external visitors must have a scheduled appointment unless attending a public meeting. And I have in here, staff must notify the town hall apprentice or receptionist, if applicable, of the visitor's name and time of appointment. So I have the if applicable, if applicable in there because if my daughter stops in on her lunch break to see me and she doesn't have an appointment, I think that's kind of okay. So for-
So she just tells them at the desk, I'd like to see-
I think that everybody looking there feels the same way, like we don't wanna just turn people away, right? Because that's part of our job is to serve the public. So if somebody stops in, whether it's an engineer or somebody, they can say, you know, here's to Lori, you know, and they can check with, you know, Lori, do you have a minute?
So many shows out there.
If you don't have a minute, you don't have a minute. So I think it's kind of leaves it a little bit vague for us to kind of be able to know, you know, if we can or want to see somebody.
Explain the attending public meeting. What do, we don't have public meetings, is that true?
Not currently.
No, so I don't think we need that.
Do we, I don't know if we have a conference room or does Matt meet there or anybody downstairs? Does the same policy apply to Lori downstairs? Do you have public meetings down there?
We don't currently. We certainly could, but at this point it's really more focused on the main floor. Because we don't, we don't have access to the fire department conference room without permission from the chief, so. But I agree with Jim, if there was a public meeting there, it would be by appointment. I mean, if there was a meeting there, it would be by appointment, if it was a public meeting, it wouldn't be held there. We don't have, we don't have capacity.
I think we dishonestly can be booked out.
Yeah, okay.
Although we may talk about something like that for June 4th, but well, let's get through here.
Okay. Do you think they need to add anything else to that? Okay, access to secure areas. Secure areas include spaces-
I just didn't want to ask one question. Your daughter comes in, we got the security door in place, we've got your administrative assistant. Is the expectation that she just says, hey, I'm so-and-so, buzz me in? Or is she saying something to the reception person and they're contacting you to say, hey, your daughter's here?
Exactly, yeah.
So basically what we're gonna say, what we're saying there is, anybody that goes to that window, the person checks with them before they're allowed to, checks with whoever they want to see, right? It's never, oh, you're going to see so-and-so? Sure, buzz the door, and they go into the coat office.
Right.
It's always that job, that window's gonna be, let me check to see if they're available, right? Lori, your daughter's out here, is it all right we send her in?
Yeah.
And you say, send her right in, right?
Should it say, this is on external visitors must have an appointment? But we're gonna have people that are gonna stop in that are just gonna ask if they're available? So should it say should have an appointment? Because if it's must, it's mandatory.
Sure, should, thank you.
What about four?
Four, that's access to secure areas. Secure areas include spaces not designated for general public access such as employee-only offices, records, storage areas, IT server rooms, and internal meeting rooms with sensitive materials. I, there was nothing about that in the other area, so.
Right, good one.
I, I just, that's one of the reasons why we're having this, right? It's because we all have sensitive-
So there's never gonna be anybody ever allowed in the tax area and in the clerk area? That's definitely closed off.
But they have their own sectors.
There's somebody who shouldn't be allowed in those, right? We can, we can say those are secure areas, right?
Yeah, and then you have, I mean-
And then what's another-
Re-service, that's a whole other-
What's another secure area? Teresa?
Well, I was saying, like, obviously server rooms or anything IT-related.
She's got more sensitive materials.
Yeah, and then sensitive materials, yeah.
Where is all this? Well, I'm trying to, she's trying to answer.
But the town clerk does have their own RSAs, like technically I'm not supposed to be going in there unless the town clerk is in there, so. But yeah, then there's other areas, just, you know, records, whether it's, you know, someone, like the welfare department, there's just sensitive information and that also is one of the reasons why we're doing this. So people, you know, you get up and you go to the bathroom and your door's open and somebody from the public is walking by and there's so and so's application sitting on someone's desk, it's, it's-
So if we, somebody shows up, they have an appointment and we confirm with whoever that they have the appointment, then are we just gonna buzz them through the door and they just walk to the, or should the person with a gun in the seat should come give them?
That's what we've been doing.
Because that way they don't wander off somewhere they're not supposed to be.
Yeah, that's what we've, that's what we've been doing, yeah.
Is that in here?
Oh, so you'd like go get your daughter?
Like Kevin came to get me, Teresa came to get Megan, will come to get me if it's, you know, well, if you don't have an admin assistant sitting up there at the moment, so, you know, they'll leave that person eventually.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But if they say so-and-so's here, then I would, I'd just get up and go greet them. And then, like I said today, that would determine where I need to go, who it was, like obviously if it's my daughter, you know? But if I don't know this person, I should, I should be sitting in the conference room. And again, I left it kind of vague because I feel like the employees that have their routines and everything, I don't want, I don't think we need to go in and just say, you have to do this, this and this. I think that everybody there has a sense of their own awareness and a sense of, you know, the quality of talent of people that they deal with and they should, it's kind of on a case by case.
Well, I think that if, like say you're in a meeting, you're already meeting with somebody, if someone got there late to the meeting, I don't think that you should leave the person sitting in your office by themselves.
Right.
So somebody else should have to escort them to you to stop, free and sale, or upset.
Exactly, yeah. And which is another reason why I should be in the conference room if it's available. Or if it's not a good time, sorry, they'll have to come back.
But the conversation, that's gonna be an important-
It's a lever up for our judgment, I guess.
Well, that's an important thing. Does Kevin be with people?
At his desk, I mean, at the window.
At the window, so I did discuss at the window.
Same with the town clerk.
I never thought of that, so if somebody came in, they wanted to see you, you said, all right, I'll spend a minute, and you don't know who they are, you're not gonna lead them in your office, you're gonna take them in the conference room. Is that what you mean?
Mm-hmm.
I like that.
That's great.
I'm learning, Jimmy.
Huh?
I'm learning.
It's wonderful.
She's a quick study.
It's great.
Next one. So anyway, to answer Mark's question, if somebody came in and they wanted to see HR, essentially what Mark's asking is Megan gonna come to the door?
Correct, yeah. Authorization requirements.
So with regard to the secure areas, how are we gonna handle the tax maps? We talked, I talked to you about-
Secure area.
Right, but how are we gonna handle supervision? Because I, I thought about bringing the 11 by 17s out to the public, but we can't bring the records out to the-
Right, yeah.
So somebody's gotta supervise them anyway.
Definitely, yeah, and that, I think, that issue does happen if somebody comes in. I mean, I haven't had to do any of these things here, thank God, but, you know, when somebody, when members of the public come in, you direct them to wherever they need to go, whether it's planning or building, and that person is always, always assisted with the staff from the time they come back until the time they're gone.
Is there, could we look into the possibility, once the secure door is in place, which is gonna be narrower than the double doors, of having a dedicated laptop or desktop?
Oh, for sure, that's a great idea.
They could just access the records online and somebody could show them how to use it, that might save-
Yeah, like a guest computer for assessing the abilities and stuff like that, yeah, you'd definitely do that.
Someone to let you figure out, check the D and everything, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great idea. That's fantastic. We can figure out as well what we said. That's fantastic. Might cost us some money, but it'd be well worth it, $17,000, I think, for two years.
Plus if you need an older one, which is a lot anyway, you could just kind of keep it rotated.
Yeah, but that's a good addition to, as we go down, right? I would be just something down the line that we can add to the security system. Basically, we wanna get it up and running like Laura said and not get everybody crazy about it, just ease into it and then we can add to it. Once things get used to, this is the way it goes, it's done.
If it can work for some of the elders of us, it can work for all of us.
That's great.
So authorization requirements. Guests may only enter secure areas when authorized to access those areas. Staff must not allow any visitor to enter a secure area without proper authorization, even if the visitor is familiar or a regular guest. Doors to secure areas must never be propped open or left unsecured.
Should they also be accompanied?
Guests, yeah, should be accompanied, guests shall be accompanied at all times.
We should clear it, maybe we get some signs made through the doors, employees only or something, do we have that?
Some of it is becoming secure because we're making it secure.
We might want to put signs up on the doors, secure area gets assigned to these areas, so it's a secure area? Because right now, we're making secure areas now, so I think we should invest in some signage.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Is that way employees know?
That's right, that's right.
Confidentiality and safety, staff should ensure that sensitive documents and equipment are secured or out of view during any visitor's presence, any visitor's presence in secure spaces? Should change that. Okay, and then emergency procedures and evacuation plans must be communicated to guests during standard visits or as necessary.
Screw that.
Which I feel like I need to, I miss attend one of our wellness management meetings, because the safety committee, I don't know any sure. Our management committee certainly have them, and I see some changes that I'm wanting to-
May it enter that?
As I'm not sure who rules on the topic.
Yeah, it's basically established, I think there's usually a police officer on there. It's Primax.
It's a required, it happens sometimes.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a little work for whoever gets it, it's a lot of work.
It is.
She probably won't react.
You said, really, you were up to that? Didn't you do that for ranch or something? You did, huh, you were telling me. And it was hard, right?
Everything's hard. Maybe the newest assistant, newest assistant could take hold of that. Because you do it this a five minutes, technically only half a week, I think, quarter week, four times a year. And one of those, I used to incorporate, I haven't talked to Megan in a few months now, about incorporating Primax into one. You can use one of those meetings as a safety, have Primax come down and do a, you know, safety trips, slips, trips and falls session or whatever session, we did cyber security, so that counts as one of their meetings, so. And that's unbreakable, I used to. Do you wanna add anything else to that one?
Well, should there be anything about securing, like if there is an emergency, I don't want them leaving something that's sensitive on the desk and they leave and then whatever, the fire department come through and then they see it, not that they are gonna divulge it.
They're gonna kill them, because the first priority is kicking hell out. You wanna know what about paperwork? I don't know, I don't know about that.
I mean, if we're flying out the door, we're gonna shut the doors anyway.
Okay, right.
You may wanna think of some way to communicate it without it being a requirement, can that make best effort?
Exactly.
Something like that.
Yeah, safety is first.
Yeah, yeah.
I think this is great.
I love it. Great job. Fantastic. And we just had a little add to it, it became all perfect, okay.
I think we had a recon on that.
I'll clean it up and, um.
Yeah, clean it up, right?
For, maybe have some ads to attend to for approval, like, uh, what if, SOP for.
Oh, yeah, you might wanna look at a different title for it.
Yeah. I'll get it cleaned up and then, um, I'll email it to you guys.
June 4th, June 4th.
Oh, yeah, okay, so we're two weeks.
Got no holiday for you?
I'll be, I'll be here.
Okay.
You're gonna work Monday? Billy, it's awful funny how you have something to do that day. I'm gonna check on that, where are you, what's your excuse?
My dad's 96th birthday.
I'm gonna check on that.
Actually, it's Wednesday, this is perfect, it's a week. Can you introduce your father for us? After what I went through to get my wife, so I'm hopeful I can get on the freaking plane. Yes.
The flight? Brothers?
I do, I do.
Yeah, that's a huge thing.
You do it every year for my dad.
My mother's Sunday is ninety, and we're doing a restaurant.
That's awesome. We'll bring your restaurant, or your trailer, come on down to the front door and we'll, we'll go ahead and handle it there. All right, so while I'm sitting back here, a quick question for you. Is this a movable operation on your part if we had a meeting at a different location?
Uh, yeah.
Would it be within the town?
Yeah, as long as I have access to power, it should be fine. Um, without power, I could record it, I'd probably have to screen it, cause the laptop, the battery, if it's streaming.
No, you'd have power.
Yeah.
The only one, yeah, you could, when we go to Richardson Park, which we'll, we'll do towards the end of the summer season, you would have power there. Thank you. Uh, do we have any correspondence?
Uh, we don't have any correspondence, um, I think we need to go back to another consent agenda, I think we did that.
We did, we did do the minutes.
We did the seven minutes and we didn't do the minutes.
Did you process it?
We did the non-public.
You did non-public minutes?
Yeah, we did the.
And we did a consent agenda.
I did not, I did not get that done enough.
Okay.
And so the consent was, here are one of those tables, and then just permanent application. The notice, the consent that could.
Can I, can I add something to that about my mother's intent to cut? So could I just add an intent to cut to let them come in? Um, it's for tax now, two six one, law party.
Sure, as amended.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended. Second.
All taken. Okay, so we wanna talk about the, the non-meeting on June twenty eighth? Is that what we're gonna talk about?
What do you mean by that?
It says upcoming agenda items and meetings, no board is selecting a meeting on, uh, June twenty eighth.
Is that the only one inside that?
Not May?
That can't be.
Oh, I guess that's a typo.
Then May changed it.
You were just, you were stirring to get that.
But I'm not ready for you to leave that in that May, you wanna do that now?
Yes, no, yes.
You wanna add, you wanna do it, you wanna have a meeting on May twenty eighth, my dad's 96th birthday?
No.
Happy birthday to you, yeah.
Exactly.
That's so cool.
And, and his mother.
Yeah, we didn't try talking about it.
Um, if we don't meet then and we meet before, ours, we should probably talk about the meeting schedule then.
What we got left of it, we got, what, ten days, is that?
June.
Oh.
Are we gonna go to a summer schedule like every other?
I think, I think at this point, we need to get through June. Uh, cause we have, uh, we're not meeting next week, we have June fourth, uh, we have trustees.
Which June?
June fourth is a Wednesday, first Wednesday of June.
Okay.
Then we have the trustees coming in on the twenty eighth.
Of June?
Of June, I, I'm sorry, the eleventh of June.
Eleven.
And, and Steve, Steve and Bill, Richard, Charlie, and I'll schedule for that.
And, uh, what would be the next, eighteen?
Eighteen, I think we could play it by year at that point.
Eighteen, well, maybe.
Well, we may not, but we just see how it's going with Lori.
And then we got the twenty fifth.
And then I think, depending upon how things go, right now, my main concern is the budget and how the latest that we, Lori printed out, the, the current status of our expenditures. I'd like you to take.
I don't know if I'm gonna project it or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, so fast, huh?
Well, it's not about next year, it's about this year and.
Just see where we're at.
See where we're at, so we, we'd like to review this on the fourth, give a week or so to go through it. Yeah, I'm very concerned about the money.
Yeah, and I'm gonna need.
We have some spots, so we need to be concerned about.
Oh, I was concerned in the beginning, when we cut it from nine point three to five, five percent, it was a tight budget. We're, we're fighting inflation, and it was a tight budget. So we just need to be cognizant.
Employees, really, it's, it's all this too, right? I mean, that part of the budget too is not right, what we've done, are you concerned?
Not so much that, it's more of the supplies and, and some of the improvements that we made.
Okay.
And we, we were making, we were making improvements at town hall, not knowing.
That's true.
What the current numbers were.
Okay.
So we, we wanna get back on track with that.
We wanna, yeah, Teresa and I, um, are gonna sit down together and just go over.
Does it really stand?
Over here now.
Great. And when did you say we're gonna go into that, like, maybe in the middle of June?
No, 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 you've got it out to.
So that, that is our budget, so I crossed off the top part right here, because technically, this, this hole right here is what we expended, but it's not the end of May, I think, I think it was more, she did email me yesterday, I think it was February. So we're gonna confirm, get more of a rip on these numbers, cause there's like credit card expenditures that haven't been added in here, it's like twenty thousand dollars worth. Um, so it's just, everybody's gonna really get backlogged, and so we wanna make sure to work on it. Pay that expenditure, so we're making decisions to approve stuff or cameras or whatever.
That's why we hold off on cameras.
We don't wanna be spending money that we don't have.
I got you.
So, we'll get that February hopefully.
To, to give you an example, we, we have forty thousand dollars allocated for town hall and Wickham Hall for painting. We've got eleven thousand, or ten thousand dollars allocated for the security door, so that's fifty thousand dollars. We have thirty-four thousand. We've gotta find the other sixteen thousand, and, and some of that is just the internal aspect. And now we're, we're getting caught back up, but we'll find it. And we have, we have funds available, it's more important to figure out where they're gonna come from. And, and we need to be aware of where the money is coming from.
That's it, so. Okay. Smart.
You got a good town administrator who's pushing us in that direction, cause she doesn't have a big checkbook yet.
I have something, all of that discussion, is that need to be written in the head?
You can just put, um, there was a brief description, or there was a brief discussion on, um.
Town hall.
Budget expenditures, and the board will discuss it for, um, we'll, we'll continue the discussion in later June. So I have this here, I'm gonna have this one. I'm gonna need approval to sign something.
At this point, uh, the schedule hasn't changed through June. No, except for this.
It's going to in a.
And, but there won't be, there won't be anything on, on May, yeah, okay.
I'm just gonna check. Okay, I'm gonna, I'll save this one, cause I can't remember what the authorization is for. Oh, I went in, okay, this was, I need to know that I got from, it was for something to do with one of the grants. And I needed the designation of authority to sign, but we can hold off on that though, cause I can't remember what brand it is from. I didn't, and I only remember, it was like a twenty-page document and I think.
Are you gonna be okay with a two-week delay?
You could always convince the sign.
Yeah.
We have a special meeting.
Let me see if I can get it to come up, right, internet is not where we're working right here. So I think it was one of the projects that Joe had sent me, and it was just about keeping Michael's name off and getting everyone started on. Oh, let's see.
Was it that one or the one that we talked to?
The same, I did it to trailer, grand, that's it. Could it be the trailer? The, the, um, the, um.
See if I can find it in here. Okay, right here, so, Underway Engineers. Thank you for letting me know about the changes, I have edited the request with Lori's name and title and signature box attached. I will need a copy of the designation of authority to sign to go along with the submission. Hold on, this is for.
Where did the email come from?
Catherine.
Is that with USDA?
Underway Engineers, it, it must be for, um, it says for the regarding DR number eight, Town Swansea Stormwater System AMP.
We could, we, we could come in on Tuesday.
Joe, Joe is now, he was here.
Yeah, so if, if need be, we, you could schedule, let me think.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could schedule something on Tuesday.
Yeah.
For, for town hall.
Right.
Are you gonna be back? Yep. Well, I don't think TSA likes my wife for.
When are you actually leaving?
Tomorrow.
Fly out of there.
And just back.
And you'll be home, right?
Tuesday, if I can get out of Orlando. It's my first time with real ID and she doesn't have it.
Oh, with the, the stardust.
No, I've talked my down there, we're gonna be three hours early.
You'll have to let us know how that goes.
I already shared something with you this morning.
It's gonna be all over the day, we don't have to worry about it.
Just, you'll be empty in the hour, but talk.
To come back for four.
I'll see you on Wednesday.
She woke up my dad's car.
Hey, man.
She was gonna do that, actually. Yeah, so we'll, we'll, just so we know exactly.
Okay, it's the thing, uh, if you can step in with me, because the fire department called me and there's a fireman that's passing away, um, Cooper. He's got feet on. Oh, sorry. And.
We hold off?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, the, the meeting on June 4th, uh, I, I have the opportunity, thankfully, other realtors give it to me to present a, uh, a scholarship to an Adenac student, and they always put me first round in their agenda, which is right at six o'clock. So my, there's, there's two solutions, one, that you're leading, and I'll come right after six o'clock if I can, or that we start earlier, which I know will wait, and we do it at the fire station conference, conference room.
Down below, it's not on there, and we start earlier.
We'd start at four thirty.
So we could be, you could leave there at six.
At ten, and then be back at ten after.
I don't like starting early, not like that.
Cause Sue won't be able to make it, but, actually, it'll be a time.
I'll be kind of helping, so.
If we've heard it?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was, do that. Four thirty, June fourth meeting, Tamara, Tamara.
Fire station.
Downstairs.
Downstairs.
So probably there's time to check when you want to.
I'll have to get the permission from your. Okay, anything else? We have a couple of non-publics.
Okay, maybe more for the non-public, under ninety-one.
Ninety-one A.
A.
Three, two. Three, two. C.
Two, two, two.
Two, three, five, five.
Uh, two, C. Three, one, two, C.
Three. So, I'm just naming.
So.
Will Collier, Contessa.
Aye.
Hatwoker, Luda.
Aye.
Okay, there, we're in non-public, you can go home.